All right, we're gonna call the special me-- excuse me, the special meeting. It's a joint meeting with the Murfreesboro City Council and the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. I'm gonna call to order the portion of the council meeting.
And I will call to order the portion of the Planning Commission meeting.
All right, we have all seven of our council members here.
And we have everybody here from Planning Commission as well, so we have a quorum.
Mr. Halliburton.
Right, Mr. Vice Chairman Halliburton.
We don't wanna forget him.
Love him, no, we don't wanna forget him. See, on his way. We have a quorum.
All right, all right, now that we have a quorum for the council and for the Planning Commission, if you will, if you'll bow with me, we'll do our prayer and our pledge. Father, thank you for this chance we get to be together. Lord, just like any other day, we ask for your wisdom, we ask for your guidance, but especially today as we plan for the future of Murfreesboro, we ask that you give us wisdom, Lord, that you give us discernment, and we pray for our staff, we pray for the people who continue to make Murfreesboro a better place. We love you and we praise you. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I was asked to give an introduction and sort of the purpose of the meeting. To my knowledge, we've only had two or three of these over the last many years where we're talking about not just what's happening at the Planning Commission level, but also what's happening with the city council. This is a little different because I know for the last couple of years, we've been working on a land use plan. Our last land use plan was done at the twenty thir-- at the time we did the 2035 plan, and we all, I think, felt like of all the great things in the 2035 plan, the land use plan was not the strongest that we had. And as a council and a planning commission, when you're continually revising or going against what the land use plan is recommend-- recommends, that puts all of us in a very tough spot. So I think our, our purpose today is to really talk about the land use plan. Greg is, and his team are gonna talk about how that format's gonna work, but also selfishly as the council, most of the council members, of course, we have two new council members, but one of the new council members, Jamie, has, has served on Planning Commission, and it gives a lot of, seeing how we've served on Planning Commission and how we do that as a council. The one thing that I think we really wanna talk about as we look at this land use plan, to a developer, the worst thing that can happen is when a project sells through Planning Commission, then it gets to the council, and there's lots of discussion and direction on the way the council sees that plan. And I think it's important that the Planning Commission, you know, the last thing as a, as a council member, we don't need to be telling the Planning Commission how to vote on things. That's not how it works, and so for those in the public who, who are watching, there's two council representatives, Councilman Wright, Councilwoman Jamie, or Ever Water.
Jamie.
Jamie, I know, we're on a first-name basis around here. So I think it's important, the, the two projects that really have, I think spurred a lot of this discussion is the project, see Greg shaking his head over there, there's a project on Haynes Drive that we had a lot of discussion about, and then the project, project on Thompson Lane, and a project on the west side of town that we, we all talked about. So I think as a council, and what we've talked about in our workshops, the goal today is to talk about the land use map, to really dive in and talk about density in areas, and then talk about how that we mesh that together. No, no real agenda besides that, but Greg, I think you've got, and we need to go to item eight to talk about, as the, now that this is in the court of the Planning Commission, to talk about the land use, so, Chairman?
Yes, so basically, we do have the one item we're gonna discuss today, and it is the discussion of the amendments to Chapter Four, the land use of the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the future land use map. And Mr. McKnight, you're gonna--
Thank you.
--update here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Council members, Planning Commission, Chair Jones. We're pretty excited to bring forth the future land use map update to you today. It's been a lot of hard work on the future land use map update, so we're pretty excited to sit down with you. If I may first take a timeout to thank our staff that put in a lot of hours on this project, Ms. Green, Ms. Rush, and Mr. Bombley, and of course, our partner in crime, Kevin Gunther with Reagan Smith, also was a big, big help in what we're doing as far as moving the project forward. Today, I'd like to just lay out what we'd like to do today, but first, a couple objectives, three objectives that we, we would like to get captured today. One is education, we'd like to educate as it relates to the future land use map, land use characteristics, areas, focus areas that we'd like to share with you. Secondly, we would like to communication to be a part of this objective, and that communication is dialogue back and forth in the breakout sessions, so that we can actually hear from you, so that we can make sure that you understand what was actually put forth as it relates to the fan, future land use map. And then, thirdly, direction, the objective for us to get direction from this body moving forward when we finish, when we finish today. The first agenda item, the first thing we'll do is Kevin Gunther will come with, to you with a, about a fifteen-minute presentation, just to kind of center us back as it relates to the future land use map and put us around, center us around how we got to where we are with the future land use map, the objectives of the future land use map, and other items that relates to the future land use map. And then we'll go into our breakout sessions. The breakout session will be a group of four, three groups of four individuals, Planning Commission and Council, that will work, be in the breakout session with a presenter, one of the staff members will be there to present the future land use map. We designed it, there's two focus areas we would like to actually speak to, and the first area is gonna be the economic development area, it's gonna be outlined with the orange circles on the future land use map. We chose that because the Economic Development Consultant, Jim Coulson, actually identified areas in the city of Murfreesboro that he thought would have a designated land use, and so we wanna be able to talk about that. The second focus areas, area will be areas that we spent a lot of time looking at the future land use and the highest and best use for those areas, and thought it would be appropriate for us to talk about it in this breakout session, just to be able to talk about those areas, because we believe those are the areas that we'll be dealing with or have opportunities to work with when we're actually presenting to you and Planning Commission and Council as well. In front of you are colored Post-it notes, you'll be broken out into groups by the colored Post-it notes. The red's to my right, green is to my left, and then the blue, it will be in the small conference room, so that's how you know you're being broken out. We didn't wanna do the one, two, three, all the ones go one area, twos go to other areas like we did in elementary school, thought this would be a little bit more efficient.
Middle school now?
That's right, we, we thought this would be a little bit more efficient and productive. And then after we do the breakout sessions, we'll come back into this setting, and each presenter will have questions that will come forward in that breakout session that we will believe that is kind of a, a higher discussion, and we wanna make sure that everybody gets the same message about some of those bigger questions that come out of those breakouts. So we'll have that general discussion, that's what that'll be when we come back. The presenter will come forth with two or three questions that came out of the workshop, present that to this body, and then answer it, so that everybody gets the same message moving forward on some of those more delicate, higher-level questions. And then we'll come back in the conclusion, the next steps, part of this, all we're doing there is wanting to make sure that we've done our due diligence, we've actually shared with you enough that you feel comfortable, allow us to move to the next step, and that is actually moving into the next step of scheduling a public hearing for May 3rd as we move forward. So, pretty simple, most of the time, Kevin's gonna come fifteen minutes, but really, we wanna really just dig into the future land use map, and Kevin will instruct us at the end of his presentation, and we can move swiftly to those areas. And for the general public that's actually looking, during the time that we are in our breakout sessions, there will be the map that we're working with and discussing, will be scrolling and rolling on City TV, and so that'll be, that'll allow them the opportunity to take a look at what we're actually discussing, and when those questions come back, they'll have a way of looking at the map to see what, what, what areas we're talking about. So, any questions, opportunities for me? All right, I'll bring forth Kevin Gunther.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight, thank you, Mayor McFarland, for kinda queuing this up. I think you both did a great job of explaining a little bit about how we got to where we are. We realized that the comprehensive plan, powerful tool, good thing, but that the future land use map and the land use categories need some massaging, if you will. So that's, this is a twenty-year plan, we're about, you know, eighteen years into that, I'm sorry, we're, you know, we got about twelve years left on it, and really, what we wanna do is talk about some clarifications in the high level. I think all of you have heard some of this information before, I wanna refresh that conversation, I wanna tell you kind of where we're at now, so that when you go look at the map, you have this all kind of fresh in your minds. So what is that future land use map, that big map you're gonna be looking at? It is a tool, I think it's a powerful tool, I think this is an important tool. So, we have taken a lot of time to work on this, and we've taken a lot of feedback from stakeholders, from all the city departments, from city leadership, and we've crafted, crafted it into that map. And what, the reason it's such a powerful tool is this really shapes your vision for land use and development decisions, you know, currently and all the way down the road for those next twelve years or more. This is probably a plan that'll be updated and changed over time, but we wanna set a really strong vision for the next twelve years. The future land use map is something that provides consistency. We, you know, as Mayor McFarland had mentioned, this can help create the consistency between discussions of city leadership, this can help consistency in land development decisions, so when land developers or people that wanna make changes to zoning come to you, they have that vision already in front of them as a sounding board. This is also something that can make sure that there's a quality of life maintained within Murfreesboro. We all know that's a very important thing with all the pressures and changes that we have to respond to. And then also, it's really something that has coordinated different infrastructure needs of the city and the different departmental needs of the city. And I really wanna pause a little bit and emphasize this, because I think it's so important. You know, the planning staff and the, and the people involved with this plan, they very much included discussions with the Murfreesboro Water Quality, Water Resource Department, the Transportation Engineering, Parks and Recreation, City Fire, Police, and EMS, the school districts, the planning staff, so that this map is thinking about all of those things, not having those be independent. This map tries to translate all those into one place, so very important tool in that regard, and I think very well noted that your city leadership and your staff wanted to make sure that that process happened and wasn't, this wasn't a piecemeal effort. What this plan is not is a zoning map, this is something that will guide your zoning, this is something that is based on your existing zoning, that was incorporated into the discussion, this is not a map that literally changes your zoning on a property. What this does do is this promotes the idea that if rezonings happen or changes happen, that you go to this map as a guide. It's not rigid or set in stone, but it is to be really taken very seriously and considered to be an important tool. So if there are changes, those changes should be meant with a lot, made with a lot of consideration, deliberation, and evaluation, that shouldn't just be a carte blanche change to the plan. So key points to the, to the update, as I mentioned, this is gonna be, I think, something that's pretty accurate, this is something that's gonna really evaluate potential growth, it's gonna shape the vision of the city. So if you have a strong vision, that ties into all the decisions you move forward with. So this should be a vision setter, this should, this is something that was done with a lot of collaboration, and this is something that should provide a very consistent message. So what are some of the key new things in the plan? One is, as Greg had mentioned, economic target centers, those are the big orange circles that you'll see on the plan, those were crafted with a lot of input from Jim Coulson, and the idea is that these are targeted areas that really allow the city to say, this is where we wanna, when any kind of change happens, we really wanna consider jobs, job growth and the economy. The other thing we're gonna talk about is the future study area, that's the green areas outside of the colored map, infill service line, the new land use characters that have been identified, and that important tool, when you do wanna change the plan, what are kind of some of the parameters you wanna use and think about when you change it? So to the economic target centers, those are the big orange circles you'll see, there's five of them identified on the plan, and that include, actually, there's six if you include the downtown area, that's Veterans Parkway and 840, where Cherry Lane comes out onto 840, the new extension of Cherry Lane, the Medical Center Gateway District, the Hoover Site on Middle Tennessee Boulevard, and Joby Jackson and I-24. And those were all identified as areas that were really prime and key for that economic growth and job creation. We, I talked a little bit about this green area, the future study area. These are areas within the urban growth boundary that the city has to set, they're legally required to set that urban growth boundary, but these are areas that we don't anticipate that are gonna have major changes in the next twelve years, that being major development pressure, major infrastructure extensions or requirements that would really suggest, you know, high-density development, or in some cases, any real extension of the city's boundary into those areas. Now, the future study area is labeled that way for a very particular reason, it's not saying there can't be any development, it's not saying that there might not be development within the county, but it's saying that before we color that with a land use category, it deserves study, and it deserves consideration, it's not gonna just be something that's done without really significant consideration. So it's, future study means it could change, it could become something, but for now, we think it is really not the focus of most of the development that will happen. This is also something very new to the map that I think is a powerful tool for you all to use, we created what we call a service infill line, and what that is, is a boundary that is established that, based on all that feedback we got from infrastructure, from schools, from emergency servants, from city leadership on the vision of what areas really should be served by higher densities or changes in a type of infrastructure, everything in that service line deserves that type of focus. And what we wanna do is, instead of extending out, if you will, corridors into indefinite, indefinite lengths and requiring those types of infrastructure improvements to follow and requiring school districts to grow and change to follow, this is really a, more of a focused in in the areas we think deserve density, deserve infrastructure, and deserve, you know, that opportunity to, to really promote growth. This is kind of a change in philosophy, if you will, I mean, there was a day in Murfreesboro where the idea was if we build it and we extend it and we grow, then the tax base will come in and kind of serve our needs and, and they will come, if you will, it's like if we grow and we build it, they will come. I think we've got to a point where we realize that that cannot go on indefinitely, and we have to understand where sustainable and smart growth can occur. So that's really where that service infill line came from. Very quickly, I'm gonna touch on some of the new categories that were created that were not in the original comprehensive plan. Auto-urban was actually a category that was in the plan, but we refined it quite a bit. This allows for single-family detached and attached, it's the higher-density residential district, but what we wanted to do is we wanted to define suggestions as to how townhomes and that single-family attached could be included in this district. So there are some very clear guidelines that we are suggesting as targets, parcel size should be ten acres or more, no more than twenty percent of the area should be developed in townhomes, a maximum unit count of forty percent in townhomes, and that the transitions that occur on the edges of these property had to really consider things like the setbacks, relationships to other architecture, relationships to roads. So we've set this criteria in there at the request, I think, of some of the feedback and the community leadership discussion on, we wanna allow for townhomes, we know they're gonna continue to be a need, it's part of the residential program that's gonna give diversity for housing in Murfreesboro, but we wanna think a little bit more about where new zonings happen that allow for townhomes. So that's how this criteria was set. Two examples that we think are pretty good examples of where this type of development has happened that would kind of fit with this criteria would include Pocket Station Amendment, that's a hundred and eighty acres, approximately twenty percent of those are townhomes, approximately forty-six percent are a single family, and we think it's a pretty good model if you wanna look at something that kind of meets the criteria that we had set out. The other one was River Landing, seventy-two acres, there's about forty percent of that in townhomes and about sixty percent, sixty-seven percent in single-family units by count. So, actually, I'm sorry, sixty percent single-family units by count, so forty percent townhomes, sixty percent single-family. So that was a question we also got was, are there some examples that you could look at and say, this is where this auto-urban criteria applies? Mixed-form housing, this is a new district that was not in the old comprehensive plan, this was done with a lot of consideration of what's going on in the downtown area, and the whole focus of the mixed-form housing is to provide opportunities for more than one type of housing option, but that housing option has to really fit in the context of what's going on around it, and there's a lot more consideration of architectural detailing, there's a lot more consideration of specific site design and how that's shaping out. We're pretty excited about this district, I think that this is something that could help a lot when you're looking at some of the infill things happening around the downtown Another big change was the employment-generating district, and the whole focus of this is about jobs and economy. So we want to encourage development that includes residential in the right places, that can be a higher-density residential, but it has to come with jobs, it has to come with economic-based development that's coming in before it. So what we've done is we've set a criteria here, again, these are targets, this is something that you can use to consider whether or not a particular project would fit this land use category, but we've set that target at, at least fifty percent by acreage of the project that's coming in to a rezoning effort would include some type of job-generated use, and that no more than thirty percent of that property by acreage would include residential. That was something that we heard from, the last time we discussed this, was a need to put in some kind of actual percentage targets into the conversation, so we've done that. Business innovation is a new district, and this does not include residential, but it does include the opportunity to do things where you're gonna have higher industry, manufacturing, and associated jobs that come with it, very much promoted vocational training centers, high-tech industry, the idea is that incubator space, or the idea is more high-tech jobs, and forming those more as like an actual business master, master planned park, if you will. So that's a quick summary, the map you're gonna be looking at in your breakout groups is reflected in the handouts you see here. We've taken a lot of time, even since our last review of this, to go back and make sure that we look once again at any, any current corridors or where there might be considerations of possible changes, so that we think we've integrated those future suggestions into the map and, and that it's not just something that's been done without a lot of consideration. Last thing I'll touch on is the, this whole idea of if you're gonna change the map, if you want to suggest that these future land use categories that we created don't necessarily suit a project that's coming in, but you wanna consider maybe realigning the map with that, that future project. And these are reasons that we think you'd wanna maybe either flex the plan and kind of move some of those land use categories, if you will, or maybe even realign the map to the project that's coming in with a suggested change. And the examples that we give that might say allow for some changes include things like the land boundaries, you know, there might be a parcel that has more than one land use on it, and perhaps the development is coming in and taking that parcel, and then you're gonna have to consider, you know, how your actual parcels fit with the colors we put on the map. Remember, we had to start somewhere, we had to use something to fill in the map, and that was done based on parcels. Parcels change, parcels might be acquired, the other thing that could really change would be the consolidation of a lot of property, that would really suggest that maybe the colors that were on the original parcels could be adjusted, because now you've got one big parcel to consider, not numerous smaller parcels. This is a flat map, as much as we wanted to consider things like slope and environmental conditions and topography and other things, when you get onto sites, we might find that there's geography, there's environmental features or infrastructure that really suggests to change, so those are possible considerations for change. Another thing is that any change you make in this map, I think this is kind of like the, what I would say, the caveat to all change, is that you want the change to line up with the city's vision, and you want it to be for the benefit of the public services and, and the general infrastructure needs of the city, and you want it to improve quality of life. I think that you have a valid bar, if you will, or standard, that anybody that comes in and has to change this map has to think about that. How is this improving quality of life for the city? How does this match up with our infrastructure needs and goals? And how does this fit with our overall contextual vision for this area? And that's kind of the litmus test, I think, that's a valid test for any change in the future land use map. So as far as next steps, and we'll probably dive into this after our breakout sessions, but as Mr. McKnight had mentioned, we are hoping that we can set a public hearing for this, move to actually approve it through Planning Commission and look for some type of city council acknowledgement, we think it's ready for that type of deliberation and consideration. So I'd be happy to answer general questions on, on what I've discussed, but I know I wanna leave a lot of time for you all to get around the map and meet with planning staff, so I don't wanna take away too much time from that.
Any general questions, Mr. Gunther, before we go into our breakout sessions? Yeah, Mr. Shackleton?
Kevin, you mentioned a transition policy, is that, is that in that list of options that you're saying there, or is there a written transition policy?
Well, the transition policy applies to the part where I was describing, it's in, it's in those bullet points, and it--
That's what I was--
Yes, it is in there, and it really applies to the parts where we talk about land uses. The other thing that I didn't mention that's in that category is if you've got collector roads or arterial roads, sometimes there's a very valid reason to consider changing land uses crossing over at intersections or main arterios or collectors, because a lot of times what's happening on one side of the street will affect the other side. So as far as the transitions, it's really related to parcel lines, collectors and arterial streets, and transitioning, if you will, where we drawn a hard line, right? We took a parcel line, and we had to draw a hard line somewhere. Maybe that transition happens with a little more consideration of those two things that I said, as well as some land uses that may have changed around that parcel. Did that answer your question?
Well, I was just thinking, if there's, in the course of doing this and looking at this entire, you know, we've done a little spot throughout the community, we've done land use studies, but I wondered, in the course of this, did you come up with some consistency between the whole plan as you developed it, this transition policy that was referenced throughout the whole way you came to?
As far as the process itself, developing the plan, I would say very much so, yes. I mean, that, there was a lot of time spent looking at specific areas and thinking about how does this color on the map affect what's next to it, and where do we draw that line, and where is that transition? So that was very much a part of the process. But it's a, you know, as I said, it is a flexible thing for good, if there is good reason to flex it. Did that answer your question?
It did, that's fine. It did, that's fine.
Hey Kevin, something that we'll get asked, where does multifamily fit in this? Is that the auto-urban? When I say multifamily, those things other than townhomes.
So there is a, there's a land use category that allows for, is a higher density residential multifamily that was in the existing comprehensive plan that has not changed.
Okay.
And those areas are identified clearly. The auto-urban is not suggesting that it would be suitable for apartments or multifamily as defined by the city. It would be only a suitable, auto-urban would be suitable for attached, single family and single family. Did that answer your question? Okay.
Employment generating.
Right, well, so Marina's done a great job of pointing something out. The EG areas and those mixed use areas are also still open to multifamily use, but they're very much in context of the other uses you're bringing to the table. It's not just a straight apartment or multifamily application. It has to be done fitting with other land uses and fitting with job generation.
Are there particular zoning tagged to the designation areas, or do you have?
Good question, Mr. Shackleton. So we have identified in every land use category what we think are, and we're just using the word, they are potentially suitable zoning districts that match this land use category. We want to be very careful. We're not saying they're only ones or that they, you know, are automatically applicable, but we've tried to identify those. Staff has done a great job. If you have that legend with the colors on it, on the backside of that, you will see some definitions of each land use category that include what those zoning districts would be, you know, that would be potentially right, applicable. So we trying to bury that up a little bit.
Okay.
Can you define the mixed form housing a little bit further? Because there's a comment there, it'll allow for single family detached and single family attached up to four unit buildings.
Right, so what we've seen in, in the area that we applied that land use category to is there's a lot of request to do something other than just straight single family, which would, you know, tie into, as you said, the two, three, or four unit attached type of residential product or land use. And so we're allowing for those in the mixed form, but it's very sensitive to how that is developed, you know, how there's a transition to the properties around it. And there's a lot of consideration of architecture to fit in it, what we consider a neighborhood setting, so that those, those units, if they happen to be two, three, or four unit buildings, kind of fit with the surrounding neighborhood feeling that's adjacent to it. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I just see the example as the downtown mixed use.
Yeah, I think, you know, what we're finding is this is a new category. It's really very unique. And as opposed to applying a bunch of zoning districts that we think fit, it's really kind of looking at what's the context of the neighborhoods close to the downtown area. So that's where that reference is. It's really saying, you know, this is very site specific.
Okay.
It's not, we're not targeting one exact zoning district with this as something that necessarily would overlap or fit. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay.
I'm excited. I think this is a good tool for you all to be considering, and we want to dive in deeper and, and if there's any more instructions we need to add, Greg?
We can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're ready to go to our breakout sessions.
Yes. Green to my left will be stationed there. Red to my right, and then blue will be in the small conference room. We can transition to those areas, and the presenters will, will meet you guys there. And it's open dialogue from there.
It sure looks like pink instead of red.
Yeah, it's pink.
It's pink.
Pink.
I'm sorry, pink. I was asking if anybody was colorblind in here, and I guess it's me.
Rick's not here anymore.
All right, everyone. Well, we'll call this part of our meeting back to order, and we've had our breakout sessions, and I believe that our next step is going to be, we are going to go over a few of the questions that came up in each of our breakout sessions. And Mr. Gunther, I think, are you going to come up and lead us in that?
Chairman Jones, so one of the questions that came up that I heard in several groups was about the downtown area, and I wanted to make sure to highlight that the North Highlands and Historic Bottoms studies that were done and adopted back in 2017, I believe, are still applying to those areas. So even though I didn't mention these as new land categories, these are something that are really sleeved right into the land use map. So you'll see there's hatch areas in the downtown that match up with Historic Bottoms and North Highlands. And what we're directing people to do is if you're in that area, go to those specific studies instead of going to one of the other land use categories. And I believe there were several other questions that Ms. Green had some responses to.
Ms. Green, Ms. Green and Matthew Blomley going to do a couple of them. Thank you, please, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones, Planning Commission Council members. Appreciate the vision that you've had and that you've given us and opportunity to work on a map to actually create an illustration of your vision. Some of the questions we had in our group was about the auto-urban residential color, which is the dark orange on the map. I think the last time we met to discuss this, there were some questions and, and asked for an opportunity about the townhomes that are allowed in this AUR, auto-urban residential district. And as we originally had the AUR, it did not allow single family attached. But we saw neighborhoods that Mr. Gunther referenced, such as Pocket Station, that we think that they were great neighborhoods that offered a variety of housing types in the neighborhood, and so created some language that said if they were over 10 acres, then there could be a percentage of the land and a percentage of the units devoted to single family attached. After we shared that, we heard feedback from members of our community and members of City Council and Planning Commission asking for opportunities for townhomes that were outside of that minimum 10 acres requirement. And so the report you have today does offer an alternative that allows properties that are four acres or less to be considered for townhomes. Doesn't necessarily say they are allowed, but they can be considered for townhomes. Planning Commission will make a recommendation, and of course ultimately council will make the decision whether these can be incorporated into those four acre or less properties. And if they are, there are some design elements that we've asked for them to, to incorporate into the design, and some of those are walkability, amenities, some difference to the existing neighborhoods, so if they're adjacent to single family detached, adding some distance between that or some open space and landscaping. And then, of course, adding that active open space, which could be pools, tennis courts, or parks. And so adding some criteria just to the quality and design of those areas, but opening that up is another opportunity. What it doesn't incorporate are the county lots that are 5.01 acres that were created without a subdivision. So since with that four acres or less, it would be a different type property. We still have the percentages for properties that are 10 acres or more that maximize the developable area to 20 percent of the acres and 40 cent, 40 percent of the units. And so those are the dark orange colors on the map. We also had some questions regarding employment generating mixed use. Employment generating mixed use is the purple on the map that you see. There are areas where it is focused. And a couple of the questions were, how do we ensure compliance with the standards that we have in employment generating mixed use? That EG or employment generating requires the employment generating use to come first. It has to happen before the commercial residential components of the development. And we've written that in the language, and we've said that, that that happens first and residential can be, come after about 30, 30 percent of the acres. And so the plan that we're proposing for you is a guiding document. It's a tool that you'll use in your decision-making process. These numbers are what we are recommending, but they are not a city ordinance. So what we will do is bring these items to Planning Commission, City Council, share with you what the vision and how we've handled it so far is requiring the employment generating or that use to get a certificate of occupancy before we release permits for the residential portion of the development. So that's how we anticipate moving forward. One aspect of that is a master plan is absolutely required. And so the master plan would show phasing, and it would show the work that would happen. What we wanted to ensure was that the carrot, which is the residential component of it, did not come first. And so the language is that we have that employment generating, and then the carrot can follow, which is the residential. Some concerns that I heard were that people might come in and just build a residential and then not follow through on employment generating and commercial. And so that's not the vision of this area. It's not the recommended language that we've adopted. And so that was the other question that we had.
Can they go in conjunction, can they go together?
So I think the decision ultimately will be City Council's. And if you think that we should do that, we certainly can make it happen. But the language says, not together, it says employment generating first.
Were those your two points, Ms. Green? Any, any questions for her before we, I think Mr. Blomley was also going to tell us a couple of the main points that he had. Any, any other questions? Thank you. Blomley?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Madam Chair, and members of the City Council and Planning Commission. I think one of the main questions that came up during our breakout session, which I believe was, we were in the, the blue, blue rules, by the way. One of the questions that came out of the, our session is what exactly is business innovation? And how does that differentiate from just regular old industrial? And so, so what we discussed was that business innovation is like clean manufacturing or, or advanced manufacturing. In the, the document, the summary report, that, you know, that would become, if adopted, would become part of the, part of the comprehensive plan update. It includes these definitions, these descriptions. It says, "The overall purpose of the business innovation category is to encourage and allow for a mixture of higher scale jobs, industrial and advanced manufacturing uses, all within a cohesive setting." And the type of development that would be appropriate under the business innovation land use category would be industrial and manufacturing parks, business innovation and research centers, advanced manufacturing, research and development, incubator and industrial and office space. Industrial centers' primary focus is industry and innovation, but can include commercial, park, and open space components. So it, it was interesting, both Mr. McKnight and I separately, without knowing the other was going to say this, cited a good example as the Woods Air Movement on, in the Parkway Place industrial development off of Joby Jackson Parkway, as a good business innovation use. The Woods Air Movement is a, I think it's a British company that moved here about a year or two ago. Swanson built them a 25,000 square foot space down on Richard Reeves Drive. I think they do research and development there. They do testing for these large air handlers that move air through tunnels and underground areas. And so there are good white collar office jobs there, good kind of light manufacturing that's occurring there, but mostly research and development and testing. And it's a, you know, a great example of a, of a, of an industry that fits within that category. So we did spend a good deal of time discussing the BI land use category. Are there any questions for me? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Blomley. Mr. McKnight?
Mayor, Council, Madam Chair, Jones, Planning Commission, I think that's, that concludes what we would like, what we wanted to share with you. At this time, I think the, the next step is for next steps, and we would ask that that next step be for us to be able to schedule a public hearing regarding the future land use map update and move forward with the actual process of adopting at Planning Commission the future land use map.
I'd like to say first, you know, this has just been a tremendous amount of work that has been put into this. And as all of us sitting here today know, we've been working on this for at least a couple of years now.
Yeah.
Three, three years.
Yeah, including COVID.
And lots of meetings by the staff, lot of time put in by them to come up with this. Every, I know there've been a couple of times already we thought it was about done, and we keep coming back to the drawing board. I certainly appreciate the opportunities to have the joint meetings with the City Council. You know, I think we work hard as a Planning Commission to try to approve projects that is, is what you want to see at City Council. So we appreciate knowing and understanding what you are looking for and what your vision is for our city. Because I think in the long run, that's what we really are all doing in the seats that we're in, is, is trying to make our city a better place. And again, it's just a true opportunity to sit here, to serve on the Planning Commission, and to certainly have the opportunity to, to sit and be with you all today. For the Planning Commission, we would like, as the next part of our meeting, if, if we feel like we're ready, we would like to schedule this for a public hearing. And we are looking at May 3rd as the date that staff would like to see that on our agenda. So if you see.
I'll move that we set a public hearing for May the 3rd.
May the 3rd. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So for the Planning Commission portion of the meeting, I believe, unless there's no other business for our Planning Commission, I'm seeing no over there, then, Mr. Mayor, we will adjourn our Planning Commission and turn it back over to you.
Okay. Mr. McKnight, council members, I know we've all had individual conversations with Mr. McKnight. I think this is what the council would like to see, but that this, we, we talked about today a couple of different paths, but that the council, we would treat this like we would any other zoning request. Legally, we don't have to have a public hearing really for anything that the, that the Planning Commission recommends on a rezoning request or anything that's a change. But we've had the history as a city, we always will have a public hearing at the commission and at the council level. And with the council's approval, we would treat this no different, that it would be have a public hearing at the commission level. The commission would either recommend approval or denial, and then that would come to the City Council where we would do this, have the same process and have another public hearing on the, on the land use map at, at the council. I, I think we, my opinion, we just need to do that to be consistent, so that's what we do with everything else.
Yeah, I think it'll be helpful as well for transparency, so.
Does anyone have a problem, problem with that? Any council members have any, any other business or any other, other discussion? Greg, to you and your team, and not just you, all, all the planners are here, and to Mr. Gunther, everyone who's worked so hard on this, there's been a lot of work behind the scenes that, just like us, we get a lot of credit that we don't deserve, because there's a lot of people who are working really hard behind the scenes. And to all the planning staff members, thank y'all for your hard work on this, to be able to present this for clarity moving forward.
Thank you.
All right, council members, seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned. All right, council members, seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned.